Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call this meeting of the Town of Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sandau?
Present.
Commissioner Seibl?
Present.
Commissioner Costello?
Present.
Commissioner Kara?
Present.
All right. When present and accounted for, move on to the approval of the agenda. Anyone have any changes to this evening's agenda? All right. We've done. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second the motion.
Motion second. All those in favor, please signify the same.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We will move on to the approval of minutes of the July 2nd, 2019 regular meeting. If everyone's had a chance to review those. Anyone have any changes to the minutes or and/or would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve July 2nd's meeting.
I second the motion.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of the July 2nd meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? All right. Here are none. All those in favor, so you can signify by saying aye.
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 And motion carries. We have no old business this meeting, but we do have our continuation of public hearing CU 19-01, request for a conditional use permit in a mixed-use zoning district for property addressed 1307 North Swan Street to be used for a group living facility. Applicant is Knutten Investments LLC. Business owner is supporting. People in need, better known as SPIN. All right. Before we get started, most of you know the drill, having been here last month. But to get started, anyone who would like to testify during this hearing, I'll need you to stand and come to the podium to be sworn in. Again, this doesn't mean you have to testify, but if you think you might want to say something, even if you have a tendency to rattle up, you think someone will say something you want to react to, just come up and get sworn in, just in case, because otherwise we have to stop everything and go back and swear in special and it's a big pain in the butt. So, come on out. Well, okay. All right. If I could ask everyone to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye and state your name. Do solemnly swear that the testimony I am about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth on penalty of perjury. All right. I think you've got everyone's names already.
Yes. If you didn't sign the signings, please do out of the way to your seats.
All right. Fantastic. We may be seated. Let me confirm, no one on the commission's had any expert communications about this outside of what we heard last month, right?
I've not.
I've not.
Okay. Excellent. Well then, let us continue. I guess we'll do this in the normal way. Does the staff have a supplement to the original report?
Yes. I'm Jamie Edmich, Department of Development Director for the Town of Silver City. After your last meeting, we've met with the attorney, the fire chief, the police chief, the code enforcement officer, the assistant town manager, and the fire marshal, along with planning staff, and both town attorneys, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Scabron. And the only conclusion that we have come to is on the recommendation section of your staff report, that because of the Care Housing Act of 1988, there is no option for the town to accept this application because of the protected class of people that reside there. So I'll leave it at that, and now it's time for questions. I mean, I'm sure you have a lot.
Commissioner?
I noticed in the analysis on the second chapter, the business license had been revoked.
Yes, sir.
So where does that lead the process?
As of Friday, they are in compliance and they have issued a business license that is up-to-date and current and accurate. So I have a copy of that. That's as of August 1st, 2019.
Thank you.
Jamie, I just have a question to come around to pass questions or...
No, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay.
For the audience, that's because he didn't participate in, the hearing won't last time. So it's not fair for him to participate this time and add additional testimony.
Just out of curiosity, we can't allow him to, I mean, clearly, he can't cast a vote when we make the decision.
Mr. Scabron said that any participation could sway a vote of another commissioner, so they would rather they just produce theirself.
But we can have people come and testify to this meeting that weren't here to testify at the last round.
Then go ahead and swear in, Commissioner Costello.
How much do you want to participate in?
And keep in mind that if it turns out that that's not okay, your decision will be overruled by the entire board. So keep that in mind.
I'm fine here. I'm fine hearing on the side of caution on this. I just wanted to clarify both her...
Yeah.
Why I'm not participating, I felt the impulse to ask a question. Can I even ask a question? The true limits of my participation, I can't even ask a question. And that's fine.
You can go on the minutes and the agenda, and that's about it. If we had other items on the agenda that had previously been heard, you would be welcome to participate.
All right. I guess I'll ask my question now. And you didn't make the presentation at the last meeting, but there was some extensive discussion about, obviously, the concerns of the neighborhood and other avenues by which the town might enforce its ordinances and hopefully address some of the neighborhood concerns. Has there been any progress on that?
Yes. As of today, I got a report from the police department. There's only been one other call there that wasn't a follow-up on previous things, and that wasn't anything about noise or anything like that. So as of today, there's been a little more police activity. And I received one other letter from a resident in the mail on Monday, and I forwarded that to the police chief to follow up so that he could speak with her about her concerns. They're similar to the concerns expressed by previous neighbors. And so also, if the neighbors do notice anything happening, they need to call the police at the time it's happening. They can call central dispatch or 911 if it's an emergency.
Okay.
If I may ask, at the last meeting relating to Commissioner Seibl's comments, we had discussed the number of disturbances at a location, and there wasn't clarity on the quantity or the amount or the... Is there any clarity now in terms of that language as to what would constitute a breach of that use of the land?
So what would happen is we would pull the call out like we did today, and we would have a meeting with the town attorney and the police chief and myself and discuss it. But so far as of today, there's clearly nothing that's been reported that would say that this property is anything different than any other property in the neighborhood.
Okay. So my question still is, you know...
There's not a set number or a certain type. That would be something we would have to discuss because then the town would have to proceed with legal issues and legal precedents would have to be looked at, and so that would... There's no hard answer. It's not... I can't say five calls. We would have to have a meeting and discuss it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the commission?
I don't have any.
Okay. So I guess it's my intention, since we're going on with this, to follow the normal format as though we're a new hearing and invite the applicant and the opponents.
Yes. And also, we wanted you to continue your hearing so that the public that watches on TV knows that it wasn't just dropped, that a lot of research and work was put into it, and that the matter has been handled to our best ability, and it wasn't just dropped. And so that's what we wanted to get across to the people that came here tonight and that watch on CAPS.
And potentially read about it.
And potentially read about it, yes.
All right. If there's no other questions for staff, then we'll move on to the applicants and invite them to a personal podium. And if you have any further comments that you want to make after last meeting, at the bare minimum, I'd appreciate it if you would refresh our memory in terms of your feelings about the findings that we have to meet to approve this thing.
Hi, I'm Krista Wilford, the Director of SPIN.
I'm Barbara Mora, a board member of SPIN.
I don't have anything more to add. I don't have anything more to add. I agree with the city's findings, the supplement that Jamie just read. We're all right with that.
Okay. The four findings, I guess, ordinarily, we ask the applicants to address those. So if you have any additional thoughts about that, I don't know if you have those in front of you. Yes, Jamie?
In this case, if you followed staff's recommendation, the motion would just die from last time because the conditional use would not be able to be used in this situation because of the protected class. So for example, if it was a fraternity house, this group living conditional use would be used for that. But in this CAP class, we cannot restrict the zone for these protected individuals. So the motion will just die.
So the recommendation, as I read it in the report, was that we should approve this, but what you're saying now is that we would neither approve nor deny it.
Yes. But that's up to you also because I can't influence your decision. I can make a recommendation that if you just choose to vote, that we really have no option but to approve it. But if you also choose to table it, that's another way to let it go. If you choose to vote, it'll go to the council, and then they'll handle it there. But in this case, we brought it back so that you could have further discussion and the public could see the end of this process. But you can either table it and let it die, or you can vote either way. And you don't have to follow my recommendation. That's just the town attorney and my recommendation.
All right.
So you have options in the chair.
Okay. Thank you. If you have any other questions for... Do you have any questions from the other commission?
Yes. This is a follow-up on our last meeting. I had asked whether you had been open to sharing the processes as well as your written requirements for maintaining security for the people that are there and how that would play with the safety in the neighborhood.
I would say that our office is open, our policies are written, and anyone's welcome to come in nine to five and check them out.
So you had no interaction with the neighbors regarding...
Actually, we did. We had a public breakfast and invited all of them, and we didn't have any neighbor participation.
Only Karen.
Karen, who's not here.
But we had a very good collection of people, and we actually, you know, just among us who are already supportive of what we're doing. And we did talk about probably continuing that process. We want to be good neighbors, and we want to be totally transparent, you know, with the whole community, especially our neighbors, about what we're doing. And so we hope to continue, maybe once a month, have the same thing so people can even anticipate at a breakfast where it's an open house and people can come and meet our residents who are there, plus staff members, plus board members, and just get to know each other better so some of the anxiety and fear can dissipate. One of the things that we did talk about, because some of the officers from parole office, we invited them to come because we do, they come by to check on a number of our clients routinely. That's their job. And we realized there might be a perception on the part of some neighbors that that was like police activity, when actually that's what they do because some of our clients are on parole, and so they come and visit and monitor. And that is part of our security system. And also, you know, we do ask the police force to do increased surveillance because of this perception, but that that also might cause neighbors to think that there's police activity when it's just actually we've requested surveillance.
Okay. Thank you very much for that testimony.
All right. Is there anyone else present to speak in favor of the application? All right. I see none. All right. Anyone? Oh, yes, sir.
My name is Dr. Neil Moan. I'm the Chief Medical Officer at Alga Medical Services, and I'm here to speak in grateful support of SPIN's request for suburban living housing in our community. As you know, we are providing services in the Tu Casa Substance Use Treatment Facility, and I want to talk a little bit about the importance of providing transitional housing to folks, our neighbors, our family members, our community, as part of a treatment continuum of care for people who are caught in substance use disorders, families that are caught in it. And in terms of building a stronger system which is able to improve the quality of life for all of our community. And also, I want to let you all know that Grant County has received a generous award from the state of New Mexico. We received it just last week. I say "we" because Alga Medical Services is working with Grant County on this program to provide a demonstration project for the state of New Mexico on building an exemplary system of care for folks who are struggling with substance use disorders, and especially the people struggling with substance use disorders who have been caught in the criminal justice system, one way or another. And I'll add that Mike Carillo from the jail is also a part of this group that's working on this project. And we received this grant for Grant County, which will be being implemented in the coming months. We just received it, as I said, last week, in part to build a complete continuum of movement where people who we recognize or law enforcement recognizes have behaviors or difficulties that relate into substance use disorder, and to get them to treatment, effective treatment, rather than into the county jail. And that's the exact point of the grant I'm talking about, which is a demonstration project. And one of the things we've already seen at Tu Casa, we've successfully placed quite a, I think the last number was 13, individuals from our community into inpatient treatment elsewhere in the state. And when they come out of inpatient treatment, we've already run into difficulty with them going back to live in the very same environment that led them into difficulties in the first place. So providing them with transitional housing, even if it's temporary transitional housing, is a critical component in successful treatment and bringing people into a life of recovery where they become productive members of our community. So I just wanted to underline that and also express, you know, when we built Tu Casa, where it is on 32nd Street bypass, the neighbors there had similar concerns, and I completely understand those concerns. We all have the right to peaceable, you know, occupation of our homes. And I understand the fears that might come with this because of the kind of stigma associated with people being treated for substance use disorders. I'll add, there have been zero incidents associated with Tu Casa, and that's our anticipation is that there will continue to be zero incidents. Because the folks that will be put into this facility are people who are trying to maintain their sobriety, trying to maintain their recovery. And we will, in place, we have in place already, and we'll have stronger services in order to support them in that. So I'm just speaking in strong support for the application and recognizing that, of course, it can be disturbing to neighbors, close to neighbors, to see their neighbors in that kind of a situation. And I'd like to close with just by thanking all of you for your service to our community as well. I know this is not a low-remunerated service that you provide, but it's a critical in our community. So thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yeah, I did have one question. So the, you know, I just wanted as a point of record, from your comments, it sounded like most of the inhabitants of the treatment location are local community members who have come back to the community. Is that correct or is that incorrect?
I would have to defer to the people from SPIN. You know, we are not in that kind of communication where I know who is there, but the best of us likely think that's the way we would use it because people from our community, excuse me, that go to initial treatment, need to come back and be productive members of our community, and that would facilitate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
No.
I have none. Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else present who'd like to speak in favor of the application? All right. Anyone present who'd like to speak in opposition? Please give us your name and go ahead.
I'm in Wayne, Dan. I live on 1300 North Swan. It's right across the street from the night to club. I told you before again, I was here last month, and I'm currently saying both concerns. You know, last month I said, I understand the need for this. And, you know, I don't have against that. You know, I know there are people that need this kind of help. However, I was, and I'm still wondering how I went about doing it. And I asked about signage. If there had to be signage, if SC was going to be here or any other, what is it, business that was going to be in there of this sort, had the neighborhood advised that this was going to take place. I asked for an answer there. I would like to have an answer. Anyway, you know, Mr. Knutten had a property. He sold that property, and from there, he moved these people over to 1307 North Swan. I mean, it's a very convenient business, it's a gentleman. And of course, you know, it's in town, it's convenient for the people there, you know, I can understand all that, but it's not convenient for the neighborhood. To me, you know, these people have issues, they have problems. And, yeah, you know, everybody agrees with that. This doctor just come up here, and he agrees with that, and he knows that, but, you know, the people there are there nine to five. After they have three, four in the morning, you know, these guys have issues, they have problems. They go into stages of anger. And, you know, I don't have to babysit them. They're grown men. They're there for a reason. They're there for a purpose of rehabilitating themselves and trying to make themselves fit into the community. I don't think that's the way to do it, to go by. I don't appreciate how Mr. Knutten did that and didn't not have a signage or anything for us to approach him about it before we had to be here. I don't understand that. I don't see how it happened, but I don't appreciate that at all. I don't have anything against any of these men there, any people that go there. They change often. It's not the same people all the time. It's a change, and everybody has an attitude. So this is what we put up with, this is what I put up with as a neighbor there, you know, that attitude. I don't have to. I don't put up with my kids' attitude if they act like that. They're out in the house. I just don't put up with that. You know, I mean, I, it's like I said last night. You're allowed to, yeah, get pissed off and have a tantrum, but not on the day you think so. I don't appreciate that. I don't, I don't have to root me against it. I don't feel how they're there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from the other...
Yes, I have one question. Have things quieted down?
They have. Yes, I have. But it is just later at night now when the traffic gets a little louder and a little abusive, you know, the airbags and the F U. You know, there's just no need for that crap. I mean, you know, it's among the brotherly, yeah, but it's still a political neighborhood, you know, they're screaming. So you don't know what's going to happen. You don't know if everything will go off or what's going to happen. You know, and I don't, I don't think I need to be in that environment.
You know, I heard the SPIN folks talk about the breakfasts, and I was encouraged by that because that tells me that there's a connection to the community and the neighborhood that's available. And it does take a lot of discussion to get through some of these problems. I know from my own neighborhood, we have similar issues, and we talk about it, as do dogs, as do without language and things like that. And so I'm just asking if you had thought about maybe attending those breakfasts and...
Well, I'm going to tell you what happened there. I'm sorry about your... Christine approached my daughter-in-law, Brandy, about that. Brandy told her, no, I'm sorry, I'm not helping you because I still have issues. And she explained this to her. My daughter-in-law has a problem right now because she's had, I mean, I don't, I think she shouldn't be by now in urgent care. She has a neurotension. But she did talk to Christine about this, and she said she didn't want to be a part of it because she still had issues with it and they were taking care of it. So, and I definitely will not go in there. I don't want to be part of that. You know, I'm sorry, if they want to have a graveyard shift here, it's not my part. I mean, somebody has to be there, take care of this. I mean, you know, I don't, why do I have to take care of it? Why do I have to listen to them? You know, I mean, I don't, I understand the need for it, but they're given the chance, they're given the opportunity to fit in the community, and they, you know, they act like they, they deserve the chance, and that they, they hold the block. I don't know. I don't know. That's the kind of meaning toward it. I don't like that, you know. I think we had enough of them, and I'm not going to believe you, because we don't need this.
I appreciate that. I mean, my only recommendation would be to try to work with them and make it a better neighborhood for yourself and for your daughter.
Well, I'm glad you're admitting that, but I'm up for it, I'm telling you, I will. I will. And I haven't called the cops, but I will, maybe not. And I haven't called the cops, but I will maybe now, if I have to. You know, I expected a little better communication, or more attention from the people that have Spin there. I don't know whether to call it Spin, it was already exposed by the time we found out about it, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition to the application?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't believe she was sworn in, I believe she arrived after...
Oh, I mean, we should pause and let...
I believe so.
Let's do that. Just stay there, I just need you to take the oath for me real quick.
Oh, definitely.
If you'd just raise your red hand and repeat after me, please. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Lorraine Margas.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That the testimony I am about to give...
That the testimony I am about to give...
Will be the truth...
Will be the truth...
The whole truth...
The whole truth...
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
On penalty of perjury.
On penalty of perjury.
Okay, do you need anything else?
You don't need my signature?
There's a sign-out sheet when you leave, you can just sign out.
Oh, okay.
All right, then. Thank you, it should, you go ahead with your testimony.
Yes, I'm Lorraine Margas, my ad, I have a rent, well, I have a piece of property at 1402 North Swan. And I have a double-wide there. My granddaughter and her husband, and two children, live there. I am worried about the area. I've always worried about it. We bought that piece of property way back in 1981. It has never caused much trouble or anything, but recently, in the last three, four years, we've noticed, and I've noticed, that there's more and more rougher people walking through there. And I, my granddaughter and her husband have two babies. One is seven, and the other one is two. And there has been times that my grandson has had to go outside during the night to quiet down whatever's happening out on that street. And with this coming up, I am against the issue of this property. I mean, I realize we do need, these people do need help in all of this, but just somewhere else, Swan is, that street alone has aged people, people older than what my, well, my age, okay? And I know that they're, they worry about it. I don't know who they all are, I just know a few families there, and like I said, they all are much older people, and they don't need to be told or talked back to or whatever. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from the commission?
I have no questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Anyone else like to testify in opposition to the application? State your name, please, sir.
Well, my name's Tony, I'm a miss, I want to add a little bit to what I told you last time. I don't approve the way that they did this when they moved in, about approximately 1986 is when I bought my property and I moved into the neighborhood. I was originally raised on the old street, but I bought some of the property and I moved in. I went to the city because I needed a variance, my trailer was a little bit longer, and went out for my setbacks and stuff. I had just received a divorce, and I moved in my trailer, and because I couldn't, I couldn't come under court, I couldn't, I was not allowed by the city to move into my trailer. I actually had to live with my mother almost three months, until we got all the variances and everything in place, before I was allowed to move in. I was told that I could actually be brought under charges if I actually moved into the property. These people came in, they knew that they needed to have, not permission, but they had a license and everything, yet they set it all up and got going, and they're still under operation, and they just received their licenses. So, you know, they say that they're going to check the background of all these people, but the same report that was given here today, I know that a lot of the information that is given about these people cannot be given out legally. Even the town silver city, what they did, the call on the reports that had gone to their house since the last meeting, they actually had to bring in their attorneys to see what they could and could not say. So when these people say, "Well, we're going to vet all of these people coming in to make sure we're not invited people," again, they're not going to tell you, the law enforcement is not allowed to tell you who these people are. The gentleman that was arrested the last time there is one young in the community, everybody knew that he had gone to jail for threatening somebody with a knife. They weren't told that, and it's just something that they want to implement, they want to do, but I don't think that, it's not going to happen, it's not going to happen the way that they believe that it's going to happen. Because law enforcement cannot tell you about these things that these people are doing, who these people are, what they've been, if they're convicted, it's public record, but if they've been charged and stuff like that, you can't tell anybody about it. And that's the law. So I'm still completely opposed. I live two and a half blocks away, again, that Aurora is a highway for anybody that wants to move in and out of the city without being seen. So I still have a strong opposition about this happening.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Any questions from the commission?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify in opposition? Yes, ma'am. If you would state your name for us, please.
Yeah, Julie Houston. I apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I have family urgency, couldn't make it. I did receive a couple of letters concerning the open, that they were open for questions, and we could come over there and look at their files. Did not get anything about breakfast, I don't know, I didn't get it, so. I have a business on Bennett, address from Bennett to Corbin, between 13th and 14th. So I have a whole block there. Lots of tenants live there on my property. I'm concerned, just for all the reasons that have been stated. We deal with a lot of issues with the footbridge that runs between my two businesses, right there on 13th. They come across, they rob the food basket, it's just now ending the drug deals that happen in that dead-end street right there. My tenants see it, it's continual stuff. The ditch has got lots of homeless folks that hang out and they drink, and caught the place on fire about six months ago. So we're just concerned that this is an already troubled area, and that this is going to be coming in and adding to all that. My residents are nervous, you know, they, we're not fenced, I mean, they can, you know, the ditch, they have access to our property, there's fence, but not, you know, it's not, people can get in. So it's already a bad situation in that neighborhood. I don't, folks coming out after all they have and that kind of thing, usually they suggest don't come back to, less where they were, that they need to start fresh somewhere else, because they're just coming into that neighborhood, it seems to me, just inviting the whole temptation, every reason that they were in trouble on first place. So, you know, it's all been said here tonight, and I'm just here to reiterate, I feel the same by the fear of it being in the neighborhood.
All right.
Thank you.
Questions from the...
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Chair.
You know, the things you talked about, and they've been made, the comments have been made tonight and a month ago, that this is already, paraphrasing, a very troubled sort of environment, where you've got the bridge over the creek where people can go, there's drug deals, you had said, there's problems of various sorts. Is this maybe an opportunity, though, to assemble a neighborhood, association of sorts, or to bring people together to address some of those things that really are not connected directly to what we're speaking about tonight?
I suppose it could be, you know, I'm on the other side, so, and I run a business, I'm not, even though I actually do live there, my place is commercial, you know, I don't know if the neighbors, you know, that some are here tonight, what they do as far as that goes. We all kind of look out and just, you know, we call authorities when we have to, and we, you know, we deal with a lot of stuff. You know, I don't know, I'm sure there are opportunities, but, you know, I haven't been involved in that, I'm just, we're just trying to maintain as much, you know, peace and separation as we can there from what's happening over there.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Case. Mr. Tarr, did you have another comment?
You know, pertaining to that, a couple of years ago, Council Tarral, I can't remember the police officer's name, and he said, he was running the volunteer center. Anyway, and myself, we, we got together, we were trying to organize a neighborhood watch. We didn't have enough people, I guess the phone was a little more, all right? You have people of enough interest to do that, but an attempt has been done. You know, it's not like we don't care, right?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tarr. Yes, ma'am.
I don't need the exercise, but really?
Please state your name.
Linda Nunez, and I just want to say the same thing we said last, we're against it. It isn't a good neighborhood, and I agree with the lady before me, that if the drug presence is there, it's not going to help. It's not going to help anybody, because it's already there, it's always been there, and really, if the police can't do anything about it, I don't see how regular people can do anything about it. It's just, it's just going to be, it's just going to turn into be something more, and I don't think that anybody, yourselves, or the town council, or this organization that's trying to help them, wants to be physically responsible for what happens, if anything happens in the neighborhood, not just to the people, but to the properties.
In reference to what the lady was saying about trying to get together, several years ago, we went in and we tried to clean up the big ditch. We did cut everything up to four feet high. The only problem with that is it only lasts about three months, and then it overgrows, the city can't keep up with it, you know, so, I mean, efforts have been made to try and get in there, to get in there and clean out the big ditch to where you can actually see people moving around. It takes the permission of everybody, every single person that lives along the ditch, that's the way we went about it the last time as we cleaned out. We got written permission from everybody along the ditch to, because you're actually going into their property and cut trees and whatnot, and it was a lot of trouble to get a four-wheel, we used a four-wheel with a trailer to exit with all the brush and everything, and it was a major operation to go in, and it only lasted, I don't know, maybe three months, and then it all, it all overgrows again, and went back to square one. So, I mean, we, the city has tried itself, right? I was, I wasn't part of the city at that time. And they tried to control some of the activity in the ditch, and it's just, it's just overwhelming, you can't, you can't do it.
Thank you, Mr. Maris.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to testify in opposition to the application? All right, with no more testimony, staff, do you have any more input?
Yes, I'd like to answer the signed question that the gentleman had. There's no town requirement that a business has a sign, the only requirement is that the street address is available for emergency services. So there's no other requirement that a business has to have a sign.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Maris.
Was there another question that anybody needs to answer? I also can suggest to the police chief that we have a community meeting there, him and myself, and maybe the assistant town manager, we can meet with all of you together and follow up on this, if you would like. I'm in the office until Friday, but after Friday, Priscilla, you can call her and I'll call you back, or you can come in and see me on Friday.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Higginson. All right, with that, I guess it's time for us to decide what we're going to do, and rather than dictate that as a chair, I appreciate some direction from the rest of the commission, your thoughts about how best to proceed. Staff's laid out pretty clearly, we could allow this issue to die, we could vote to approve it, or we could vote to deny it, in which case we may get the town council's problem and staff's problem, and, you know, they may just decide not to mess with it anyway. So, you know, we have a pretty narrow range of options, really, when it comes down to it. So, what's the council's pleasure in terms of how you'd like to proceed? The commission, second.
Well, I'd just like to kind of summarize how I understand the situation. After the last meeting, Spin apparently did make an effort to reach out to the community. The community might have a little bad vote about it, but the effort was made, and to the best of my knowledge, they're not doing anything that is against the law, or problematic, or unneighborly, or anything like that, especially now that they've made these efforts. On the other hand, the neighbors do have their rights, and we have an ordinance on the city, section 32.1, which is a public nuisance. To the degree that the neighbors feel that there is a nuisance being created by the presence of this halfway house, they have the right to communicate that to the city. Now, it's up to the city on how they would respond to it, but it kind of becomes a bit of a legal matter at that point. If the neighbors are sufficiently open arms about the behavior of the clients there, then the city has to respond to that. But, you know, that's a hypothetical, that may or may not be the case. So this is how I understand it. And staff has done a big amount of research here, and there is the issue of it being federally protected right for these individuals to be in this community, so, the way I see it is, I'm ready to make a vote on the basis of the facts that I've seen so far. That's my comment.
If you'd like to make a motion as to what vote you think we should take, I would certainly entertain that, Ms. Tann.
Well, I make a motion to, for the commission to vote on the... Well, I make a motion to, for the commission to vote on the, I mean, well, it's not actually mixed use zoning designation anymore. It's basically just allowing the spin operation to continue with their business license.
So we have two options essentially. So a motion has to be affirmative. So we can't, you wouldn't make a motion to deny it. You'd make a motion to approve it and then we'd vote it down, which would essentially deny it. So we can either make a motion to approve it or we can make a motion to table it and let it die. Those are the two options.
Okay. Then I make a motion to approve this.
Okay. A motion to approve or here's a second.
There is a third option, which is not to vote on.
Well, I mean, we could do that. I mean, but tabling and not voting on it is essentially the same thing. I mean, at some point we have to end the hearing.
Yes.
And so.
Okay, so I'm ready to vote on. I do want to underscore.
Before we move on, we do have a motion on the table. So either second it or.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Now, discussion.
So just to underscore what Commissioner Sandor has said, I do interpret the situation to be similar and this is a land use case. It's a mixed zone, mixed use zone. What they did was, what Spin has done is legal. It's what the law requires. So that, it's very important to understand that. And so when we hear from, from the staff that no signage is required, that doesn't mean that it's regrettable that perhaps a better approach wasn't taken, but you've heard from them that they're doing what they can to open up. And I would have to just underscore the importance of that because these problems are in our community whether we like it or not. Whether Spin is there or not, the causes of addiction are in this community and it's not going to go away until we start to work together. And I think the doctor can attest to that. I mean, it is, it is a community issue. It's a family issue. It's individuals. And I just have to say again, I would suggest strongly to try to work together if possible, if possible.
Thank you, Commissioner Carr. So I don't know if it's necessary to do this, but I should point out, even though I'm the chairman of the commission, I'm just a commissioner, which means that I'm a citizen of the town Silver City that has volunteered their time to sit up here and do this. So, you know, these remarks that I make, they don't represent the town. They don't represent the commission. They represent my views as a commissioner. With that having been said, I was very disappointed and I would even use the word angry when we began this hearing a month ago because this group home represents such a need in this community and it's emblematic of progress that we have made as a community towards addressing some of these problems. The folks at Spin have taken it upon themselves to tackle this problem. It's a big problem. And I was and continue to be extremely frustrated. There's a lot of community support that will be necessary to address this. And so to go into a neighborhood and attempt to stealth your way into creating a group home is disappointing. And I'm not reading anything into this. I mean, this was essentially what the testimony was during the hearing last month. So I am a little appalled frankly. I think some of that stems from this is a troubled neighborhood and we kind of feel like you can get away with that perhaps. And that's unfortunate, particularly given the populations that the organization serves. And I hope moving forward, this won't be, this is not the final solution. This isn't the ultimate facility. I think that the organization wants what the community needs. And I certainly hope that there will be some lessons learned in terms of how one builds community support for something that is so vitally important to all of us. And I have to say that if our hands were tied by federal laws and since I would have to strongly consider how I would vote on this even as supportive as I am personally of what Spin is attempting to do here. I think I said that without being too, without letting out some of the extra anger that maybe I'm containing. That having been said, I understand the neighborhood's concerns and I can only imagine, you know, when I served on the town council years ago, I represented District Two, which was the university area and the part of Indian Hill that's in the town limits. And I just imagine if something like this had happened in those neighborhoods, what the outcry would have been. And I understand what you're saying and what you're feeling and I wish I had a better answer for you here. I think the staff has been pretty clear in terms of what our options are and, yeah, it is what it is. It is, I think, as Commissioner Carr pointed out, an opportunity for the community. This process of building a better town, better neighborhoods is one that never ends. And perhaps this issue has catalyzed some interests, some concerns, some anger that might motivate some people to get involved who wouldn't get involved before. Something good can come out of even negative situations or, I don't know, ambivalent situations as this one might be. But I really encourage you, you're going to have to live with this unfortunately is the way it looks. So there are avenues. You use law enforcement. There are town codes that need to be enforced. But be on top of this. Don't give up. Don't walk away. Don't poke your hands. This is an opportunity. All things are. Are there any further comments from the commission?
I have no comments.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing done. All those in favor, we have a motion on the table to approve. CU nineteen dash zero one, conditional use permit for property at thirteen oh seven West Swan Street, Silver City to be used for group living facility. Applicant Newton and Investments, all C business owners supporting people in need. There's no more discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed and the motion carries. All right. We have no new business on this evening's agenda and no community forum, which brings us to reports from staff.
Before everybody leaves, I would like to, have you noticed that there's a community forum section on every agenda of this meeting? And my comprehensive plan requests that we begin neighborhood plans and I would like to start with yours if you're willing. So we can meet at the Rex Center. Linda, if you'd kind of like to spearhead this, you can come in and meet with me Friday. But I think that we can definitely meet with the police chief and get a neighborhood plan going and it doesn't sound like Spin is the only problem in the neighborhood and yours might be a great one to start a neighborhood plan with. So I don't want to leave you hanging at the end of this. I want you to know that I'm there from eight to four thirty. I see you laughing. But take me up on it. Challenge me. Let's make it better. So come on in on Friday when I come back. You know, give everybody a couple of days to settle down and put me to work. Let's work on it. Okay?
All right. Thank you. Any other reports from staff?
Yes, sir.
And the reports from commission, I want to thank you for what you've just said. I think that's the kind of attitude and approach that we have to take as a community and thank you for your willingness to do that. And I was excited. I met today, I've met now with two of the three applicants for our last remaining seat on the zoning commission. The third one stood me up, so I guess that makes that part of the decision, you know? But I expect that later this month, the mayor will take action and make an appointment and we will have a full five member commission for the first time in quite some time. And I will say that of the two, of the three applicants that I met with, I think whichever decision he makes, they're going to be an asset to the commission. So it's exciting to be here. That's all that I have. Other reports from commission?
I have nothing.
Okay. And we move on to community input. If anyone here from the community have anything they'd like to throw in? All right. Since there's none, that moves us to adjournment. I will entertain a motion. Sam?
I would like to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion to adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.